Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash.
For this meeting, this probably will work, this will work just fine, but if we have the ability to, you know, what we can see each other, it would be great.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that send it?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is weird.
Beville did the stay at home, right?
Yes, they did.
Who else has joined the call?
Um, City Manager Lynn.
Hey, Mr. Lynn.
Yes, hi, how are you?
I'm good, sir.
And Leslie's here.
I'm here, Cindy and Brenda.
Brandon's here.
Cindy's here.
Justin?
I have one caller that I'm not sure who it is. I have Brandon, Cindy, Mr. Lynn, Leslie, and Brenda.
Anybody heard from Justin?
He'll be on in a few.
Okay. Mayor on?
Yes, the mayor just got on. Somebody just joined the call?
I, I just joined in, but it doesn't, can y'all hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, said something about an audio PIN, and I didn't know what that meant.
I didn't have audio PIN either.
Me either.
Just hit the pound key.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Muted.
So, real quick question, um, about the meeting. I had a citizen reach out to me and ask how public comments is going to work.
I don't see public comments.
Public comments have actually been suspended, and, um, later on, yesterday, the agency came out with an opinion that, um, they would have to call within an hour before the meeting, possibly have to give their public comments, it would be out loud to be put in a minute. But, as of this meeting, it would be really, we don't have any public comments.
Okay, okay.
Is this pretty much how we're gonna do the April meeting, the regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just getting a heads up.
And the meeting Monday.
You have a meeting Monday?
The meeting Monday?
I didn't get the email.
No, it, it, it'll, it'll go out, uh, later, but the agenda's already been posted. Uh, we were waiting on a, uh, particular set of attorneys to, uh, approve something, and I had asked the all folks to, um, kind of nudge them a little bit so we could put on this agenda, but they didn't, to it in time to put it on this agenda, so.
Okay. Monday at six?
There's only gonna be one item on the agenda, so it should go pretty quick.
At six o'clock, March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty, I called a order of a city council meeting. Former Miss President Amanda, would you please call over?
Council of Breonna?
Present.
Council Lynn?
Here.
Council Sine?
Here.
Council Kano?
Here.
Council Meyer?
Here.
Thank you. Leslie, would you say the prayer, please?
Oh, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we ask that you would be with us, help us to make good decisions and do what is necessary to move our city forward. Uh, in your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Somebody's got a component in the background, you need to turn it off, because you can hear it.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Leslie, Brandon, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Got you.
Somebody's got a TV on in the background or something, can hear that noise in the background.
Okay, item number four, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance twenty dash zero two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Kennedy, extending the declaration of local disaster, establishing rules and regulations for the duration of the disaster, restricting penalties for violation. Any movement?
I make a motion, item number four.
I'll second that.
Everybody read what they received?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Is there, is there any other discussion on that?
What's the indefinite, um, do, are we going to, I was looking through, I'm looking through it one more time for the date, uh, is this indefinite, or we're gonna set a date?
The fourteenth, we'll reevaluate it?
Okay.
Fourteenth will be reevaluated.
Okay, so that's the date we're gonna set, we're staying on the fourteenth, reevaluate, if we need to go further, we'll extend it.
Okay.
Got you. Just making sure.
Um, anything else on it? Does anybody have a mo-, uh, any movement?
I make a motion to, go ahead, accept item number four, to extend the declaration of disaster to April fourteenth, and then discuss it when the time comes up, comes around.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call over.
Council Breonna?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Council Sine?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number five, consideration of possible action in regard to postponing Kennedy Mile Music Festival. Any movement?
I'm making a motion to consider item five on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Well, I just, with everything else, doing, um, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just thinking, with everything that's going on, and, and now with the case, um, in Karnes County, and, and the couple now that we have in Wilton County, and all those, like, couple of, um, I think we should go ahead and postpone it. I just think we need to pick a, a date, or kind of maybe discuss it later for another date, but I don't know what we are with contracts, if any, we've made for any of the musicians.
Amanda, can you inform us on where we stand with that, with the contracts, and whether open dates are available, or if we can just postpone and come back and talk to it later on?
I have spoken with, um, the majority of the artists that we do have contracts with, and they, I, they are all very understanding of us postponing it into a future date. Um, I did, um, they did ask if we need more or less where we want to, um, move it to. I told them that we weren't a hundred percent sure, I know, I told them it'd probably be August, September, um, so whenever we would probably have the festival, and they all seemed fine with it, and we're very, like I said, we're very understanding of the situation.
All right, if that timeframe rolls around, where August, September comes, and things, they still haven't gotten better, we're still under this Corona, uh, COVID nineteen situation, how would that affect if, um, the budget's already in, everything's coming around, how would that affect the budget? Will we still be able to use it, or will we have to just cancel it?
We'll be able to use what, Brandon, you're talking about use the money?
Uh, money set for this.
Well, that, if, if we don't, we don't use that money, that money.
Extend the declaration, we don't know exactly where we're gonna, where we're gonna be sitting at, that timeframe, hopefully everything's better, but if it's not, uh, we're, eventually that one hundred and fifty thousand that we set for Mile Fest.
Well, you already have, we're trying to. Artists.
Go ahead, Amanda.
These are already accounted for, and, and with the deposit, those deposits are non-refundable.
Okay.
You cannot have money for.
Well, I don't know.
So, the way that I feel about it is, if we, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is budgeted for, right, so that money is budgeted for through September thirtieth, um, in this fiscal year, so that, that money will still be available. Um, but if we, like, we need to postpone it for even longer, my personal opinion, because we'll be starting to a new fiscal year budget, is, and, and because we're already maybe into that, but if maybe we should just postpone it till the next year. But if, if things start clearing up, it's already budgeted for, so that shouldn't affect anything, as long as the, the artists are okay with, uh, the postponement, uh, allowing us, or not penalizing us for the, uh, deposit that's already given.
Yes, and the artists, I don't wanna, the artists aren't gonna wanna come out with everything going on either.
Right, right, absolutely.
What if we just postpone until further notice?
Yeah.
Until we actually do know it.
How many, how many months, with the chamber, you know, we start working on Blue Landed Days, several months in advance, how many months in advance do you need to start signing contracts, and contracts with artists, and vendors, and planning, and Brenda, you might know some of this too, how many months in advance do we all need to answer? For new dates?
Well, as far as I know, I, I don't know on the music, because Amanda's the one that's been handling that, um, but as far as vendors, I mean, if you give them at least a month's notice, most of the vendors are ready to, you know, unless they have something booked, like, let's say if we're gonna try to do it in October, and there's already a festival for October, they may already be booked for that, so if you wanna try to, again, like what we did before, kind of go around other festivals, pick, and, uh, at least give, uh, you know, these vendors at least a month, a month and a half advance notice, so they can prepare if they're gonna come.
Brenda, have you had any vendors reach out to, reach out to you for Mile Fest already?
Me, no, I have not, because we, I hadn't been working on that. We were working.
We have had vendors that video, uh, reached out to us at all, already.
Okay.
My personal opinion, I think.
But we, we need to, we need to, we need to postpone it until we are, till we're clear, till, till the, till the powers that be say that we're clear, it doesn't matter what we've done or gonna do, we need to postpone it until we are clear, then once we're clear, we can make a decision on when we wanna try to have it, or if we wanna just move it to the next year, but right now, we need to postpone.
May I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, may I have the floor, Mayor? Um, he, here's, here's my assessment of this, I realize this is like the single largest event for our municipality, uh, as far as the community goes. Um, what we've talked about is moving it to Labor Day weekend, um, and, and doing it that Friday and Saturday there. Uh, that timeline is, is consistent with the federal government's actions, and what they're doing with COVID nineteen, and when they're moving things, they're moving things into that September, October timeframe, which means they're, they're anticipating everything to be back to normal around that timeframe. So, if we tentatively move it, uh, to that timeframe, we, we accomplish a couple of things, we can give our headliners, uh, and our vendors an idea of when we're looking at more firm, that way they can start to, to book then. Um, if whatever happens, if we're still, for whatever reason, dealing with COVID nineteen at that time, uh, everybody's going to understand, and we can, we can look at, you know, adjusting at that point in time again. Regarding the budget, that's just a real simple thing, uh, the money that's been spent has already been spent, the remaining dollars are still there to be allocated. Our goal in the City of Kennedy is going to be have our budget adopted and approved well before September, uh, I'm looking mid to end August having this thing adopted. What we will do is, we will take in consideration any unused funds at that time, and we will roll them over into the new budget, so if you, if the City of Kennedy normally budgets a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this event in May, what I'll do is, I will look at what was unused at that point in time, and I will increase that budget line item by that amount to accommodate for the movement of this, as well, you know, potentially into October if it had to go, as well as the normal one hundred and fifty thousand, so that next May, we would still have the money there to put this on next May, so I, I would account for all of, all of that.
That sounds like a good plan.
Sounds good.
Um, you know, if we, like you said, if it comes, that time, and they're okay with, you know, everything's good, and we can do it in October at least, like you said, we can let our vendors and our musicians know what's going on, that's kind of sounds like a good plan. Um, and again, like you said, if it, if it comes to that we still can't do it, then, you know, we'll address it at that time, but I think it, at least it gives everybody an idea of what's happening.
With Fiesta and.
And then just.
With Fiesta and some of those other big events, like going on in San Antonio that they postponed, have, and I'm just asking, because I really don't know, I don't go to them, but have they already started to leave?
Fiesta, Fiesta has been postponed, um.
From November.
Is been canceled till next year, um.
The City of Goliath canceled, I think, the Iowa.
Only had canceled there after seventy-six years.
Yeah, they canceled it.
Yeah.
So, so Fiesta's post, is it postponed, or is it canceled?
It postponed.
It postponed from November.
November.
And then what about ACL? Is that what y'all were talking about?
Um, we did.
I don't know, but that was canceled, I think. And the City of Goliath just canceled there.
It was canceled completely.
Yeah. Again, my personal opinion is just postpone and, and, you know, until further notice, until we actually know where we are, in the interest of public health.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what, I think what the, I think what the, I think what the City Manager has just said, postponing it to, uh, Labor Day weekend is a good plan, because it allows us to still move forward, and if it ends up that we can't have it, we still gotta do the same thing, we're still gonna postpone it or cancel it.
Right, I agree with that.
Any movement?
I'm making a motion that we move, that we postpone it till the, uh, Labor Day weekend.
And I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call over.
Council Breonna?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Council Sine?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All of Beville.
Motion passed. Item number six, consideration of possible action in regard to the apartment lease at Kennedy Heights Apartments. Um, I'm gonna ask the City Secretary for a presentation on that, if you guys are okay. I don't know enough about it.
So, whenever Mr. Shaver came in, interim City Manager, for his contract, we needed to provide him housing, we got an apartment at Kennedy Heights, at the Kennedy Heights apartment. Shortly, very shortly after he was hired, um, is when the, um, City Council started doing interviews, and, and selected Mr. Lynn. The city still had a short-term lease of three months with the Kennedy Heights Apartments. Whenever Mr. Lynn came in, we already had, we already had, um, the, the rent paid March, we had paid for half of February and March. Now it has come that the rent for April is due, and the lease is in on May eighteenth. So, my question, well, I would need guidance from the council on how to, on, on the payment of the rent for the, the lease. Mr. Lynn has been at the apartment, and I, I don't know if council will allow him to continue staying there, and the city pays, or if they would like to go to reimburse the city for the rent, and then if after the three months, which is on May eighteenth, if the city wants to, um, inter, end the lease with Kennedy Heights, or pick up another six months.
So, if we terminate the contract right now, is there a penalty fee?
We will still have to pay the, the rent for April and half of May.
We gotta pay it.
How much is that?
The, the monthly rent right now is thirteen eighty-three a month. When Mr. Lynn, um, started using the apartment, we tried to get the furniture removed, which is an extra, which is four hundred dollars, but they said the furniture was included at three-month lease. And so, without the furniture, the rent is nine eighty-three. So, the city would still owe, she would still owe two thousand. Thousand seventy-five dollars roughly, um, for the rent for April and half of May.
No matter what?
No matter what.
No matter what.
And is Mr. Lynn staying there now?
Yes.
And in our contract with Mr. Lynn, were we, uh, providing housing?
No, if the council, if the council decided to let Mr. Lynn stay there, there would, there would have to be an amendment to his contract.
If we let him, but if we let him stay for the two, for the month and a half that we already have to pay for anyway, we wouldn't have to do anything with this contract, is that correct?
That's right.
I would have to get a little bit more.
That's incorrect.
Correct.
Yeah, anything that would benefit me financially, we have to amend. Now, council, be aware, I have already told Ms. Hines, that if the council elects to just, to just keep their legal obligation through the end of this lease, I have no problem reimbursing the City of Kennedy for what they're obligated to, uh, once they issue the payments for the rest of this lease.
That was gonna be my question, so, if you're willing to, if you, if you're willing to stay there, and don't mind reimbursing the city back for the next six weeks, for that amount of lease, then why don't, why don't we just, you, the, the city still pays it out, you reimburse back that for the payment, and then after three months, we terminate the contract?
Well, what I'm, what I would do, if the city agreed to do that, Council Meyer, is very simply this, the city would pay from, for April's full month of thirteen hundred dollars, and then I would reimburse the city. Throughout the month of April, I would pro, I would probably then go and try to negotiate the lease to be moved into my name, so the city wouldn't be liable for May at that point. It, now, the one thing I need to be transparent about, is I have reached out to the Housing Authority, uh, they supposedly had a larger, um, dwelling in another city that would, um, benefit my family as a whole, and, um, I don't know where that stands as of right now, but when I talked to them last, they indicated that they could be ready in as quickly as three weeks. So, there is an actual, uh, glimmer there, if you will, that at the end of April, I may actually be vacating completely, so, but I, but I do, I, I would take care of reimbursing the city for April, that's, that's not an issue for me at all whatsoever. We still would have to draw up an amendment to the effect that the city would be, um, making the payment on the apartment for April, and that I would be reimbursing them, so that would actually, I still have to be in writing, uh, as an amendment to my contract.
Hey, let me, a little bit of information.
That's simply just for transparency purposes, so that residents don't think you all are trying to do something that's not, uh, in writing already, and that, or that we're trying to do something shady, that's why we do that.
Let me, let me see if I understand this correctly. If you, if Mr. Lynn decides he does not wanna stay there and take the lease, what does the city owe?
Two thousand dollars.
Two thousand seventy, yeah, two thousand dollars. That's why I don't understand why he would have to reimburse us, I mean, if he don't stay there, if nobody's there, we gotta pay it anyway.
I agree.
So, I mean.
Really lovely.
I don't, I don't understand why he would.
Go ahead, Leslie, I'm sorry.
I don't understand why he would be paying us back for something that we were gonna, uh, for a fee that we were gonna have to pay, regardless of him being there or not. If we were paying that because he was there, and him being there was a, was a, was a caveat of us having to pay that, I would agree with that, but if he, we're gonna have to pay that money regardless of him being there or not, if he finds him another place and leaves, we still gotta pay that money, we still sign that lease, we still own that as the city, am I correct?
Right, that's right.
You are, you are correct, but then we're not extending that offer to any of our other employees with the city, so, why by default do we give it to him, just because, well, we have to pay for it, so, we're gonna choose our city manager, I realize we got the apartment for the interim city manager, but that was not a part of the negotiation agreement, nothing against Mr. Lynn, but that wasn't a part of the no, negotiation agreement originally that we executed, um, when hiring him. So, my problem with it is, why are we giving a free apartment to Mr. Lynn, and not giving it to our city secretary, or giving it to our public works director, or somebody else, what justifies him as getting the apartment for free?
And, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I always operate in the common sense arena, and it just is not common sense to me, that we're gonna pay two thousand dollars for this apartment if nobody's in it at all. And if nobody's in it, and nobody has a need for it other than the city manager, it doesn't make sense for us to make the city manager reimburse us for an expense that we have already said that we were going to incur, and already signed the contract to have.
Right, but in this situation, it, it's a benefit to him, and it's both a benefit to us, he has a place immediately that he can live in, and it, it, just if we were gonna offer it to any other employee because the city had it, I would expect reimbursement as well, I mean, 'cause then you're giving an added bonus to an employee, and you're not being fair across the board, that's just how I personally feel about it, I feel like this expense doesn't fall, this expense falls on the interim city manager, and the council making the decision to have an interim city manager, because we knew, when we hired him, upon his expense, or upon his, the, the salary he was getting paid, we also had to provide housing, and with that housing, the shortest term we could find was three months, so, say if the three months was a total of five thousand dollars in housing, and another ten thousand dollars in fees, we knew to have an interim city manager, let's just say for eight weeks, was going to cost, uh, the City of Kennedy fifteen thousand dollars, I, that's just how I personally see it, I mean, it's the ultimate decision of the majority of the council.
I mean, I, I agree with, we knew that was gonna have, we were gonna have that cost, but to me, it doesn't make sense to have something that you've paid for, and then not use it, but if you use it, you're gonna make somebody else pay for it, because we agreed on having that contract, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
Is there any other discussion on this item?
What was that?
Is there any other discussion on this item?
So, when will they, when will the amendment be drawn up to reimburse the city? How soon?
Well, Amanda, the City Secretary will, um, advise you as to what the motion needs to be, uh, but I would take care of writing the resolution, as well as writing the amendment next week, um, to have it be affected, so.
But if, if you're, whatever. So if, if you, whatever decision council makes, it would need to be approved with Resolution twenty thirteen and al- also to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the contract.
I'm okay with him, um, staying there and not having to pay for to stay there because we're gonna pay for it anyway. That's me.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to that effect. I'm gonna make a motion that we allow him to stay there since we already are going to incur that expense. We allow him to stay there while he's looking for housing. And if he finds something before that lease is up, he's, he can, he can leave and we're still not out anything and we still gotta pay what we gotta pay.
I agree.
I agree.
That would be my motion.
Okay, so Mr., um, Counselor Lynn, can you say, um, res- a Resolution twenty thirteen and to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment?
And I would authorize the mayor to sign Resolution twenty thirteen, authorizing that.
Thank you.
Second.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
No.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to an engagement letter from Santoyo.
We skipped seven.
I'm sorry, guys, I did skip seven. Item number seven, consideration of possible action in regard to approve City of Kennedy city manager, William Lynn, as an authorized signature on all accounts slash documents of Texas Champion Bank. Is there a presentation on this?
Well, I, I can speak, um, one as well. Um, with Texas Champion Bank, the city manager, of course, has access to the account, and we really can't get much done with, without him on the account right now. So I couldn't.
I can't hear you, somebody's.
What was the last thing you said?
I said, I can't get much done right now at the bank without the city manager on the account, on our bank account.
You can't get much done?
No, like, for example, we need a token to be able to get into our account, and the city manager has to authorize it, but because the city manager's not on the account, can't get it.
So it's a formality. So I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number seven to have Mr. William Lynn a signatory for the City of Kennedy as the city manager.
And I'll second that.
I'll second that. Okay.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yeah.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to an engagement letter from Santoyo Waymire, PC Energy Attorney regarding oil and gas lease agreement. Is there a presentation on this?
Uh, not really a presentation, Mayor. I just wanna let the council know what this is in regards to. Um, our, our city attorney, uh, Mr. Ruiz, uh, recommended, uh, that we go out of house, um, for someone to review this as oil and gas rights, uh, was not his, was not their forte. Um, and this is in reference to Marathon wanting to enter into a production sharing agreement with the city to allocate production from their existing wells. Um, this just, um, Santoyo Waymire, uh, this is their forte and their expertise, and, uh, I agreed with, uh, Attorney Ruiz on this, that we needed a specialized attorney to look at this so that we could make sure that the City of Kennedy is, uh, fully protected and that we get everything that we should get out of this, uh, going forward. So that's just kinda where we are. Uh, what we're looking for the council to do here is to authorize, uh, myself to go ahead and do whatever it takes to affect this letter and bring Santoyo Waymire, uh, on board.
Any movement?
What?
I'll make a motion that we, um, take action in regards to engaging the letter for the, uh, Santoya Weinman PC Energy Attorney regarding oil and gas leasing. And, uh, allow the city manager to do what needs to be done to execute it.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
What is this costing us?
Uh, his fees, uh, counselor on page two, they will range anywhere from two twenty-five to four hundred dollars an hour, depending upon which attorney or paralegal that works on this. Uh, Mr., uh, uh, Waymire stated that he's probably gonna be the primary on this, and I, I believe he bills out right around three forty-five an hour.
And how long should this, will this take him? Do they give you a timeframe or it, it says the amounts, but?
No, sir, there's, there's, there's no timeframe as to how long this would take, but we certainly wouldn't be using them any longer than is absolutely necessary, uh, to make sure that the City of Kennedy is protected on this. You know, we wanna make sure that whatever Marathon is trying to do in, in, in this new agreement that, that we benefit the best we can from it. So, um, you know, if it took, you know, a month or two months, it, it really is on the long-term money well spent.
Yeah.
So then, this is necessary in your opinion?
It's extremely necessary, yes, sir, because our current law firm, this is not their forte, and if they were to give us advice on this, they may actually be doing us a disservice because they may miss things that someone who specializes in these type of things would pick up on.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynn, you're gonna work very closely with them?
Uh, most definitely, I'll work very closely with them, almost in his hip pocket if you'll let me.
Sounds good to me.
I'm sorry?
I said, that sounds good to me.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Lynn, can you just keep us posted on how this goes, as, as it goes along, in the next month or two, however long it takes?
Most definitely, counsel. Just like I send you guys updates on everything else, I, I will continue to do so as, as we progress through this and as they get with me and tell me and communicate what's going on to myself.
Sounds good.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number nine, motion to adjourn.
Mayor, may I have the floor?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, who wanted the floor?
City manager.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Lynn.
It, it's, it's not an agenda item, guys, but what I wanted to say simply for the benefit of the governing body and the residents who will eventually listen to this recording, is that I wanted to thank everybody for how they have, uh, participated and followed the direction of this governing body in these hard times with the initiatives that you guys have approved for the greater good of protecting the residents. Uh, I am totally amazed and touched by how this community has pulled together to do simple little things such as bring food to City Hall for people to come and get, how people have adhered to, uh, the ordinances and, uh, are not congregating in the restaurant dining rooms that they're doing the takeout and all that, that they have willingly disrupted their lives in the interest of keeping safe. And I'm just so touched that we are actually leading the charge in Karnes County in how we are handling this COVID nineteen. Other people are looking to us to see what we are doing and how we are handling it because of you all, the governing body. And I wanna thank each and every one of you for your support in doing this and taking care of our residents, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion to adjourn.
Really quick, before we adjourn, I just wanna let everybody know that burn ban was lifted today. So if y'all have anybody asking y'all, it has been lifted, but that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.
Did somebody second that?